Well, I've gotten the signal and so we'll open the meeting at seven o'clock. This is the May 6th meeting, regular meeting of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. And we're going to start with a brief handling of the absence of... We have three commissioners who are not with us tonight. Shannon Leary is not here. Diane Madigan's not here. Tucker Saws is not here. And our alternate Josh Mickelson's not here. So Jackie Beatos is an alternate and she's going to sit for Tucker Saws. And we have four commi... Oh, actually, yeah, we have four commissioners. So we have enough to do business. But I will offer a note as a matter of convenience for some. Because we only have four commissioners here, I've decided we're not going to do the discussion... It's item number one under general business. No, that's... Yes, it's described as zoning commission issue prioritization discussion. There's... It's too much to that. It's too important. I don't want to do it with just four commissioners. We're down virtually five people tonight and it's just too important. We're going to defer that to June 3rd. It's not the next meeting. It's the one after that. So if anybody's here for the issue prioritization discussion, which is important, our apologies for attendance issues tonight, but we're not going to deal with that. So feel free to not stay if you'd like.
Do we think it's going to be at the next meeting?
No. I said that it's not. It's going to be...
We're going to do it on June 3rd.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we'll move to review of the minutes of the two meetings on December... On April 15th. The first one was our regular meeting. The regular meeting started at seven o'clock. So we'll go from there and backwards to the special meeting that came first. So on the regular meeting, does anybody have comments? Let's start with Jackie.
Was Dave Moore still part of the commission or had he resigned? Because we have him as absent, so I just wanted to check the timing on that.
He had. He had resigned.
Oh, great.
Yeah. It's our fault.
Nope.
We'll move that. Yep.
But thank you for bringing it up. I forgot. I was going to look at my...
March 31, I think.
Stuff today. I saw the same thing and wondered about it, but... So we're awaiting replacement of Dave. Other comments?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. Line 60... I'm sorry, 83. I don't think this should be a comment after slides. And line 84, I think instead of two, we should say of.
Which line was that?
84 was my second comment.
Oh, got it.
Of, yeah.
Yeah. Also on page... On line 169, we should add dollar signs before the numbers. Same. Also on line 193, dollar sign before 227.
Got it.
That's all I had on that document.
Any other comments? Kate, did you have anything to say? It's okay. You don't have to.
No.
Okay. And then the meeting prior to that one that started at six o'clock was a special meeting on... What had to do with our discussion about the potential inclusionary zoning regulation.
My only comment was Dave Moore was listed as absent on that one as well. For the same date.
Yeah, it was the same day.
I have a question for you, George. On line 42 and 43.
Say it again.
Line 42 and 43 of the special meeting says federal programs are available. And then it references built-for-CT program. Is that considered a federal program or is that...
I actually think that... I thought that that was a state program.
Okay. Okay, then I think we should clarify because that... The way it reads, I read it to...
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest for the purposes of the meeting, so you could just say there are programs available.
Yeah. So that's fine.
So we're just going to scratch out including the...
No, I would just say I would just scratch out federal.
Right. There are programs available.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. No other comments? Going once, going twice. Somebody want to make a motion that we approve?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the minutes of the April 15, 2024 regular meeting as amended and the April 15, 2024 special meeting as amended.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and the special meeting on April 15th. Any further discussion or comments? Then we'll go ahead with a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion to approve those two minutes passes four to zero. The next thing on our agenda is the public hearing on the zoning application 2410, a text amendment to section six, the floodplain zone and section 17. It's the definitions of the Simsbury zoning regulations related to the time period used to determine cumulative substantial improvements. So Brittany, do you want to...
Yes.
I would have Vice Chairman read the call on this.
Oh, okay.
I would do that first. He's got it in his hand.
Ready?
Yes.
The Town of Simsbury Zoning Commission will hold a...
Tony, move that.
Tony, yeah.
The Town of Simsbury Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting on Monday, May 6, 2024, at the Simsbury Public Library, 725 Hop Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070, in the FSLPL room at 7:00 PM on the following application. Application ZC 24-10, a text amendment to section six floodplain zone and section 17 definitions of the Simsbury zoning regulations related to the time period used to determine cumulative substantial improvements. That is...
Yeah, I do... I would suggest letting Brittany introduce the topic.
Thank you. Brittany?
Yep, I just have a few slides. As you recall, on April 1st, at the zoning commission meeting, we discussed this topic of substantial improvement, improvements and set the public hearing for today, May 6th. Substantial improvements apply to structures located in the town's floodplains. Includes floodplains A, AE, floodway. They are all required to adhere to substantial improvement requirements when making improvements to them. A simplified way to explain substantial improvement is once repairs, maintenance are made to a home, again, in the floodway flood zone, over time, where the costs of these repairs and maintenance activities are more than 50% of the current market value of the home, the owner is required to bring the entire structure into compliance with the floodplain regulations. And these are building permits such as roofs, additions, decks, kitchen remodeling, a number of different types of permits applied to this. And then at the bottom is a formula to help us staff determine when substantial improvement comes into play. So currently, our text reads in our regulations that these maintenance and repair costs are tracked over the life of the structure, meaning when the house was built. And staff proposes to change that time period track to a 10-year time period. We felt this was less burdensome to new owners who buy structures in the floodplain as well as current owners that need to make improvements, maintenance to their homes. The 10-year period is also more in line with other surrounding towns in the Farmington Valley, including Canton, Avon, Granberry, East Granby. Farmington still has the life of the structure. So this is just the text as it reads in our regulations. As you can see, it's a pretty simple change. It's removing the taking place during the life of the structure and adding taking place during a 10-year period. And here in the draft motion, I'll take any questions.
So just for discussion, what is... If we change it to a 10-year period, do things get missed?
No. So you always have building permits coming in and if you're in a flood zone or in a floodway, even if it isn't a substantial improvement, it doesn't hit that 50% threshold, it still has to conform to the flood standards.
Okay.
So whenever we receive a building permit, they look at our flood map and it triggers whether it has to come to the flood manager for review.
I think that's good to know.
So for example, if they were to put a, like a new deck on and there was a certain type of footing required, you know, flood zone, if they had an existing deck, they wouldn't have to do that, but if they were putting a new one, they would have to.
They would have to, yep.
Or whatever the thing is.
Yes.
And are most of the, like, requirements when they have to do work, are most of the things like large ticket items, this like floodproofing that they're required to do? Like, would there be any benefit to putting like a small percentage of your project budget has to go toward making some sort of upgrade? Or is it like these kinds of upgrades can't really be made that way because it's really more drastic?
So they're... So if I'm following you correctly, so you mean these are more big-ticket deck additions that usually are the ones that will hit that 50% threshold?
Yeah, I understand like what makes a 50% threshold, but I'm just wondering like what the feasibility would be. And I'm not suggesting this is the right answer. I'm just putting it out on the table to like, let's say someone's doing a kitchen reno and it's $25,000. So it's not 50% of their... And, you know, there hasn't been any other work. It's not capping them off. But you say, okay, $2,500 has to be spent toward doing some sort of improvement as well to try to...
Right. Right. I see what you're saying.
But I don't know how you know the value of the improvement.
So there's only certain projects that trigger the need to... To make it floodplain, floodzone compliant. So kitchen addition interior work, while it does count towards the substantial improvement threshold, there... Unless it's in the basement or something like that, it doesn't always need to be floodproofed. There are some circumstances where there's not that need. And I don't know if it'd be... We always let them know where they fall in the substantial improvement tracking. So I don't know if it's staff's responsibility to let them know to put aside a certain amount.
I guess what I'm saying is if you were supposed to be like doing something with pipes in a basement or like a foundation wall, if you did your kitchen, then instead of saying like, well, now you have to do every single thing in the house all at once, you would have to spend a certain, like a smaller allotment to start whittling away at some of those improvements that like FEMA wants to see, such that the houses eventually do get the improvements made.
I don't think that there's a zoning mechanism that allows us to compel the property owner to say, you can do this, but you also have to do this. I just don't think there's a tool that'll... Under statute, that really allows us to do that.
Yeah. Because it would be unrelated. It wouldn't necessarily be related to the project.
Again, the problem we're trying to solve for folks is that over the life of the structure... Well, in Simsbury, that life could be, you know, significant. It could be 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 years, 80 years in some cases. And then, you know, we track all of that. And so each roof and each boiler and each deck and each window and each... That all adds up to, you know, to a point where a homeowner wants to do a new repair. And we're like, well, now you've got to raise your foundation.
Do the whole...
You've got to, you know, do these kinds of things. And we're trying to find that balance. We want to... It's a big project and you're doing a big project, you're adding half to the house and it's 50%. We're going to catch those and those are the ones that are going to trigger the full new conformance.
I mean, it seems like... So I think that's super onerous for the homeowners to have to do like significant things. But this rule seems like it's sort of... It's going to cause the majority of people to never have to make any additional improvements. And maybe that's... Maybe that's okay. I guess I'm just wondering, I guess. We think that's okay, right? Because that is what this is doing.
And I think that's our approach is that I think staff thinks it is okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think now, I think...
And so do the other towns.
I was just going to say that for... It's in keeping with all our neighboring towns. So the other thing is, I mean, from a real estate perspective, it's going to catch up. So if they go to sell and they've done the kitchen, but there's a FEMA, there's something else, you know, there is another mechanism, but it doesn't have to be zoning's responsibility.
Yep.
And I don't know if Brittany mentioned this, but in the... Did you say the model ordinance in the state?
No.
So the model ordinance in the state uses a 10-year period.
Okay.
So we are more restrictive for sure.
But if we did a survey of 169 towns and cities, we might have been right in the middle.
Yeah, so we did. We looked at our friends in the Farmington Valley.
Fine. I think that's a great idea. Any other questions for Brittany before we ask for public comment?
No.
None, okay. Then I will turn to the public if there's anybody here tonight who'd like to speak to the commission about this text amendment. Please step forward and we need you to give your name and address and then go right ahead and share your thoughts.
Hi, I'm Lori Miller. I'm here with my husband Al Miller. We live at 86 Riverside Road. Ours is the house that when you face Riverside, you're looking at our... From the Flower Bridge, you're looking at our house. We're in all the wedding pictures. Our house, the house that we live in was built in 1910, so it's 110 years old. It's 114 years old. Al's family has lived there since 1953, so actually even before the giant flood. Like, we were one of the families who received the unsettling letter that said we were nearing the limit. We've been trying to maintain. We're aware of the fact that we're in all of the brochures and, you know, we just want... And it's an old house. It said we were nearing the limit. We were both in our 60s. We want to remain in that house if we can. With a house that's over 100 years old, regular maintenance is essential. We also will probably be making some modifications because we're old. And we would really be able to... We strongly support this amendment to the resolution so that we can keep our property looking good.
Oh, yeah. I'll look down to make a note here.
Hi. My name is Susan Olson. I live at 109 Hop Meadow Street. I speak in favor of this amendment. I have the privilege of owning perhaps one of the smallest houses in Simsbury. At 87 Riverside Road is less than 900 square feet. It was converted from an existing structure in 1953 and our family has maintained it since that time. It is becoming... With every maintenance decision I face, is this counting towards the tipping point? When I want to replace the oil tank, it's like if I replace it inside the garage or outside the garage, does that make a difference in the tipping point? Last winter, some of the pine trees broke off and took down the wires. They were... They could have damaged the roof. It could have put me over the tipping point. And like within $15,000, that could happen at any time. And it eventually will happen, just in maintenance. This shorter timeframe would allow more normal decisions in house... In maintaining a house. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nord Christensen, 35 West Mountain Road. I almost think this doesn't go far enough. I would like to see it also pull out routine maintenance like roofing, things like that. Things that are done routinely, you know, every 25, 30 years. I think that might even be a better approach, especially with somebody with a smaller house like that where now you throw a roof on there, all of a sudden, you know, you could end up at that point. It just doesn't seem fair, in my opinion. I think you could go even farther and exclude some certain routine maintenances besides.
Anybody else? Wow. Not seeing anybody else rising to speak. Does anybody have anything they want to say before we close the public hearing?
To speak toward Nord's point, is that something we can do?
So FEMA has minimum requirements that must be met. So unfortunately, we have to meet those minimum standards. They do allow us to change the time tracking period like we're doing tonight, but unfortunately, we have to include everything that they state in the FEMA regulations.
Thank you. So it's... We don't have the latitude to not count roofing and other maintenance.
We are quite... Since Mr. Christensen...
Yeah.
And I don't... I just think those FEMA regulations don't... They define what requires building from it and what are improvement in it. And those are included in that definition.
Do you go with a lesser timeframe? Five years?
The town certainly could.
Right. Right. I think just looking at other towns and what they're doing and we felt 10 years was a good time period where it's long enough that if there is a major project that... I mean, FEMA wants all structures in the floodplain to be compliant. That's the bottom line. So we're trying to balance that need of theirs to be, you know, working with homeowners and trying to be as least burdensome as possible.
In your surveying process, did you come across in the Farmington Valley anybody under 10 years?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments, questions?
I'd be inclined to approve it for the 10-year period. And if that becomes a problem, we could reevaluate, but at least this would get this done so that anybody that's like in the... In right now, trying to make improvements, they would be able to. And then, you know, if we've realized in a couple of years that this isn't enough of a ease for people, then it can be reevaluated. That would be my thought.
Okay. Then does someone want to make a motion that we close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? We'll go ahead and vote then. All in favor, closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Then it's four to zero in favor of closing the public hearing. Now on to the question at hand, the text amendment as we have it in front of us. Does anybody have comments or questions on the wording or any other aspect of it? Hearing, none. Somebody want to make a motion to go ahead and approve the text amendment as it is presented?
I'll make a motion. Do you want me to read it? Or as presented?
I think you can... Because we're showing it in public, I think you can go ahead and reference the draft amendment on the screen.
Okay.
I think that's appropriate. And since it's been handed out at your desk, you have it.
I will make a motion to approve the draft motion that is presented for the application ZC 24-10 that is presented.
Okay, thank you. And a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the text amendment as it's presented on the screen in front of us for application 24-10. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. So that motion passes four to zero. So the text amendment is adopted. So we're down to the... The next area on our agenda is the general commission business. And as I said earlier, because we are... Our attendance is thin tonight. We're going to pass on the zoning commission issue prioritization discussion that's listed here. We're going to defer that to our meeting on May 3rd. June 3rd, excuse me. Is it in this room likely? Yeah, okay. And then that takes us down to just a very brief point that I wanted to make. The Planning Commission has created a committee to monitor the progress over time on the completion... I think completion is a good word, of the plan of conservation and development. It's a 10-year plan as we know, and, you know, that's a long time. But we've seen the number of goals that are in there, so it's not unreasonable. In any case, the Planning Commission has put together the notion of a commission to... They're referring to as the Plan Implementation Committee with a membership of eight. And so they've asked for a representative from the zoning commission to be on their plan to oversee the achievement of objectives on the plan of conservation and development. So from the zoning commission, I've asked Tony to represent the zoning commission and he's agreed to do that. So I forget when the first meeting is. I think... Did I send you the mail?
It hasn't been sent yet.
Oh, it hasn't been sent yet. Oh, but it's coming up for June or July is likely. Yeah, okay. But it's... There would be one member... Two members from the Planning Commission apparently. One from zoning, one from the town administration, one from the Board of Selectmen, one from the Conservation Commission, and one from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and then one from the Economic Development Commission. So the outline indicates they're anticipating quarterly meetings with... On an as-needed basis somewhere in between when they're needed. So Tony's going to be involved in that on a quarterly basis and maybe not for all 10 years, but if he loves it, maybe. Definitely so. Okay. So that's just an announcement so people know where we are on that. And that's really going to do it for the business that was identified on our agenda for tonight, so.
You will have a number of items on your May 20th meeting. Three or four kind of site plan, special exception items. So be prepared. Brittany will be running the show that night, that evening, so... And I will not be in attendance.
George, if I could ask a question of George?
Sure.
I saw a lot of activity on site. I saw a lot of activity on site over the weekend, the last week or so. Could you give us an update on what's going on with the construction?
What site?
Town Hall.
Oh, yeah. So the town... At Town Hall, there's a... So Town Hall has a major parking lot renovation approved and they're getting to work on that between now and summertime. So what you've seen in the last couple of weeks, I think they just put up some lights, some new lights. People have complained over the years about how dark it is when we all exit Town Hall in the wintertime. So you've got new lights going in, new curbing. They're going to mill and redo the entire parking area, both the upper and the lower lots. There'll be a new landscaping. So that's going to... I think the bulk, the heavy stuff is really going to wait until school's out. Because there'll be less Board of Ed folks as well. So that's the project.
Is there an ND sort of?
I think they hope to be done by the end of July is what I understand.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good. It's nice to see it moving clearly. And as I was driving down tonight, I was observing once more the progress on the building that across from the Weetag Tennis House. And they are making progress there. And I know TJ told us at our last meeting that the anticipated completion of the one that's going to be a daycare of some sort is November. They're making progress on that. You know, it's a function of how many people are actually working there. And apparently, there's more these days. And apparently there's more these days than there were in the past. So that looks like it may be on track, but we'll, we'll know it when we see it, so.
So, yeah, just one, um, just one other thing. I've been, I've had a few people in town ask me about what's going on with the Wagner Ford site. I know you gave us an update maybe two or three months ago, is, has there been any, any progress with the developer?
No is my answer. I, I have, I, I speak with the principal every week or two, the project manager and principal on behalf of that property ownership. It's Prospect LLC or something like that. Keeps telling me they're about ready to, to get moving. I, I'd been told they were tying up some loose ends on the leases and, and getting that stuff. I think they were also trying to find some, perhaps some additional financing for soil remediation, which is kind of required as part of that project. They gotta take some old soils out and put some new ones in because of some contamination that has been on that site. But, I mean, I wish I had, had, had more concrete. We have, we have broached the, the topic with the property owner that. That we are considering some, some blight action in, in the coming weeks and months to see if we can't move that along. Obviously, they want, they wanna demolish the building at the same time they're, you know, they're, they're. Getting momentum for construction, but they have cleaned the site up significantly, although it's a, you know, it's a vacant, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's a well-identifiable vacant property in the middle of our town, so we're paying attention to it.
Yeah, no, I've had a couple of people complain that it's an ongoing eyesore.
Oh, yeah.
Understood.
It is.
Understood. Understood.
All right. I know you're working on it.
We're aware, yeah, we're aware, so.
Thank you, George.
Trying to be strategic about. When and how.
Okay, anything else? Then how about a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Kate, and a second.
Second.
Tony, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion passes four to zero, thank you.